You got, you got eight people occupying that building and we have to add a second bathroom because of the conference room.
Well.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to save the district a little money.
We just need to look at it and see.
Okay.
I mean, if you add on, let's say, I don't know how many people could fit in that room, Scott will probably tell me later, but.
Well, I knew earlier.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
What?
You have to, you have to, you have to calculate for max, I'm off.
So, so if you take that room, just a.
That's where it's at.
If you take the minimum, or that meeting room and you say, okay, we want to leave it that size. And let's say it takes two bathrooms to leave it that size. The different uses we can use for it, you want to make sure that you can actually use them function, effectively for those purposes. So if we're going to use it partially for, for holding fire training and for holding, you know, water sewer training, it'd probably be a little bit smaller. So if, if we could shave off, you know, two hundred square feet or four hundred square feet, and it's still functional for that purpose, and it's still functional to have a regular meeting in, then, and that gets right up a bathroom, then that's.
Yeah, so if you, if the capacity of that room is a hundred and twenty-eight, they're not gonna, they're not gonna let you have a two over.
Well, I don't know, I'm not a bathroom.
Well, just for a hundred and twenty-eight people, I don't think they're gonna.
That's, that's, that's the assembly you, you calculated for the max.
Right.
So.
That's just for fire though, for, for your ADA compliance or whatever else you could live for, say maximum capacity.
Of course, it's probably got something to do with occupancy too.
It has to do.
I mean, you're not gonna have people in there all the time.
It's just like a restaurant, they're kind of screwing up restaurants, if you have over, I wanna say twelve people, you have to have two bathrooms now for a restaurant. And it really makes it hard to have a mom and pop restaurant anymore.
So, I'll talk to the architect and see what they, what they say. It has two bathrooms in there because that's originally what I told him. But if we're gonna make it smaller and we're not required to have two bathrooms, then we can get rid of them.
I have no problem with this the way it's laid out. My issue is, are we moving all of the district personnel to this building? And if we are, then we're repurposing this as a firehouse only. So, which means we need to find a place to have these meetings.
Would you be okay with the district not accepting cash payments for, for the bills?
Absolutely.
I have an issue with it because the direction the state's heading, it's already banned to be cashless in several cities now in the state.
That's already.
Cities are now banning cashless payments, as in you have to accept cash now in several cities in the state. So I wouldn't.
That's, that's, that's their.
I know that, but those people, those cities, they control the state legislation, I won't be surprised if they start putting that regulation on us down the road too.
Well, and it's possible for people to put cash in that drop box. They should, some should.
That's a good idea.
No.
It's not a good idea for some of these people to carry this amount of cash.
It's not a good idea to pay your damn payment late either.
There's a. So, so basically, I mean, what this whole conversation started as is this is what we're presenting at this point in time. If you guys are willing and interested in moving forward with this basic concept, uh, we can, I can definitely look at what we talked about, about minimizing the overall building cost. But if you guys are willing and interested in moving in this direction and taking all of the district, or all the administrative function out of this building, and put it there, then the fire department presumably could come back at another meeting and provide a plan, assuming that there is no administration in this building.
I would be willing to go forward with that once we've had the discussion about this building, and I'm willing to come to another meeting to do that.
I'm not saying that you need to agree in blood that you're gonna go with that, I'm just, I just wanna make sure.
No, as far as consensus goes, I'm okay with it.
So I just wanna make sure that.
What do you want to see with this building?
I wanna see, exactly, thank you.
What do you want to see with it?
That's what he wants to know.
That's exactly what I want. Why don't you tell me what your plan is to do with this building?
But the goal is to have all staff.
Don't ask me, don't ask me, tell me.
Operational needs and use of space.
Got it, okay. With no CSD staff.
Yeah, okay, payment station. Payment station.
Oh, the payment station's just a drop box, that's boring.
Right now.
So. Well, from office reception area where they came in and occupied this space to receive bills for a scheduled period of time, I don't see it being a problem.
Okay, you know what? I'd be okay with that as long as people couldn't go there on off days and pay a bill. They either make the commitment of dropping a check in the box.
There you go.
Or they're here at between noon and four o'clock on every other day.
Cash payments could be based at this date, location, and company.
You know, you do it, you do it by our.
That's just, that's just implied robbery.
You do it by our guidelines.
Cash is here, aren't you?
This is, this is when this office is open for payments. Otherwise, use the drop box.
So then you have issues of people needing to fill out forms for starting service, stopping service, uh, getting information.
John, I, I think that public has to be allowed access to that area.
Okay.
Because you're, you know, public isn't just the people paying bills, you're saying.
No, you're right, you're right. So let's just keep.
So, so the, the number of people that are doing that is pretty minimal. So if you, if you make it sort of a standard that this is where they come drop off their payment.
Oh yeah, but what about, what about the people that wanna come in and fill out an application, now we've got that.
Like I said, that's fairly minimal, and it's usually, you, you're a renter, you found your month and you fill out your application.
They do online, you have an online component, you can, you can always stay application and send it in.
Fill it out, fax it in, email it in.
Do you email it with your credit card to start?
I just wanna ask a question.
Call, I guess.
I think having the CSD there and saying that you're never gonna have any traffic at all is not realistic.
I agree.
There, there's gonna be a component.
Yep, I agree, and that's what I'm against.
And.
That's really the only thing I'm against.
And because we have a plan for an actual admin, I don't want this becoming the permanent CSD.
If you can get an access, if you can get that access sort of developed, that's an awesome idea.
I think that would be the.
That would be just hunky-dory.
That's just additional costs.
And you know, I'm just one person, but I just, I, I can't go along with it, I just can't.
So.
I, I know, I know how I would feel if I bought a house in Cul-de-sac and the community services district dropped that building at the end of my street and said, "Come on down," I'd be bummed, just like when you buy a house without, without, you know, you have the same situation, you bought a house without a garage, right? Well, it's not a garage, you own a driveway. So now it's an issue.
So, sorry, I was just gonna say, so, direction for fire department would be to, to assume that this is a vacant space and it's gonna be utilized for fire and for the sheriff's beat station that we'd like to incorporate into it and things of that caliber.
Yes.
No CSD personnel.
Emergency services.
With the exception of perhaps a receptionist that could be dual purpose.
Right, and the, and in that vein, the thing I wanna know from staff is, is this community going towards an actual fire department or is paid call in essence?
Well, it's dying.
I know, and that's something that we really need to begin.
Volunteering is dying.
I know it is.
That's why we're paid call.
Well, there's, there's another component there where we have people that are pay call and a Skype and pay just for a period of time, not a permanent employee. They're just, they're, they're covering shifts and there's a pool of people.
I think.
It's done across the United States to a certain degree. We have to change, we're starting a campaign, this is about facilities, I wasn't gonna go into it, but.
Right.
We're putting out notification to the community, in the community only, inviting and bringing people down, "I'll come down," we got a little open house. Try to get them interested in, let them know what we do in the community, and we recruit within. We're gonna do that until January third, the first Friday of the new year. After that, we'll get our pool of people, we'll see who wants to join, and they'll, once we get that pool of people on the set of training in February, March, and try to push out some people that are useful to us.
When do you look for new, new employees for?
If that doesn't work, then we have the other component where we can reach out to individuals that are already like firemen, that would come and do a shift to make money and cover that are trained and they know the aspects of firefighting. And that's where the, the component of paying them to be here, at least one or two people, because we get mutual aid.
I, and, and I think that, you know, especially with how that plays out, we may really need to think about having this building ready for at least a two-on-deck, twenty-four-seven fire department.
John Green and I talked about county fire. Lafco is not interested in inheriting another county thing. I had Chief Delbert up here, tried to pressure him into a little money because of their commitment to our surrounding areas. Every community, mostly in this county, has a county influence, and our county influence comes from Station Thirty or the new one they're building in Congress from Target. And, and that's not realistic, so. There's some things that we can do where he can help us out, but to actually get funds directed in our area to support that is gonna be a little difficult. Lafco is not gonna adopt this unless we're completely dead. And if they did come in, they would take all the equipment, all the money, the station, the building, and the whole ball.
Right, and I, and I'm totally against that, and that's something I was gonna bring up.
All your capital is gone.
Cause I, I'm.
Well, you needed force, you got somebody else doing it.
No, God.
They would need to compensate themselves for replacement of the equipment, to staff, to remodel the building, to all the.
Right, you have, you have a fire department.
Right, but they're not, they're not gonna do that, and plus they're gonna.
I understand that part of it.
The county will send up two people to cover an engine that aren't from this community.
Right.
And all the other things that we do to support our community will not exist.
Yeah, I know that, I don't wanna see that happen here.
I'm just saying.
But, and that's why we may need to, if this, if paid call and volunteerism does, we're gonna have to go.
We're working on it, and it's.
On the bright side, we have a whole new pool of residents to draw from, because Jazzy Town's been built out, we have not reached out to those individuals, you know, at an official level. Now that we have the people's self-help housing projects that are being built, there's younger, stronger, dumber men that are willing to.
Find someone down there in Jazzy Town, find someone with wastewater certificates.
That's his job.
That are interested in being volunteer firefighters.
Your, your issue there is we've outgrown the, that, we've outgrown the fact, or the, the ability to have dual purpose people, because we are getting busy enough that we don't have the ability to just lose somebody in the middle of the job to go on a fire. I'm not saying that if they want to, that they can't do that, that is totally.
Totally illegal.
It's totally fine, we can't do anything about it, I, I would support it in that.
Right.
But we can't force them to be on the fire department, and I can't say, okay, well, this, this guy is going to be on the fire department.
I still think it's, if, if they want it to be, that's the best thing you can have.
Other than you'd have to find somebody that lives here in town.
Right.
And.
I know, the odds are, oh, you know. Just have somebody during business hours.
We're gonna throw it out there and see what happens, I, I think, well, we already had a couple walk-ins. One guy did, he just bought it, or not bought it, he's finished his people's self-help house, and he's a truck driver of some sort, he's a little bit. So we're gonna set up a training program, we're getting off track, and I apologize, I don't think you know where you're talking.
Right, so about this building.
Last word?
So you guys have to make any ideas, resolutions?
I, this is a, a receiving file.
What?
A receiving file. Uh, is there any other public comments?
We need a bit of room.
Yeah, we do. Back here, way back here, the crowd waving.
Right.
Uh, I, I gotta say that I, I really agree, if there's any way that we can get that access around there, you know, cause that, Benito, uh, street there.
They don't need it.
No. I mean, that's kind of a narrow street and, and like going back to the last meeting, sometimes you got ten or twelve cars parked in front of one house.
Listen, thank you.
So.
And it's narrow back in there.
Yeah, it's a narrow street.
Not everybody's gonna go that way, some people are gonna go N sixteen.
Yeah, right.
And sneak around, and, you know, you got a little billy on his big wheel coming out, the driveway between two cars.
But it's a straight shot right back to that Eastman, you know, right past your feet.
They just move the building to the edge, maybe turn it.
Yeah.
And, uh.
But I'd really look into that if I were you, so.
So I have a question, so following this meeting and the next meeting, will you give them direction from a board vote about what?
Well, that, yeah, well, I mean, I don't wanna do it with three people.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm just wondering, cause I know Kelly needs to keep moving on what he's doing.
Well, I, you know, I, I think, I think he has a pretty good understanding from discussing it with the four of us tonight.
Well, basically, basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, basically what I've gotten from this conversation is that you guys are not, are not opposed to the offices being down there. That if we can mitigate the traffic, that, that you would be okay with it being down there. It is not, it is not the forever home of the administrative offices, I think we can all agree on that.
I, I wouldn't be, it's gonna be like, I mean, that's gonna be nice.
It is gonna be nice.
It's gonna be big enough, in the future, you can downsize the size of the conference room and add two more offices.
So before, if you're like.
Yeah, two more offices you get out of that, and still have a good-sized conference room.
But.
Cubicles.
Well.
You know? There's so much, seriously, it's not a bad plan, it's just that, that, the traffic's my concern.
So, if we can, if we can mitigate the traffic, then you guys are interested in doing this, this.
Yeah.
Idea.
There's also a, a point made by Director Parent that we'd like to know what the community members that would be affected.
Yep.
Think about this.
Yep.
So I think there's a component there that needs to be addressed.
And we'll investigate that.
Yep.
Should we take it in mail order or?
I don't know, man, I, I think doing bilingual, door knocking. Two, two people.
We only have one.
And I, I might even, I might even volunteer to do it.
That would be.
But I would need somebody that's more knowledgeable.
I think one of the things to ask, if that were to be the direction we went, would, if they are all interested or something, is to probably host a little information.
Well, the thing to do if you go to their homeowners association.
Yeah.
But not everybody's in HOA over there.
Right.
You know, the older homes have nothing to do with that.
Right.
And they would still be affected.
Well, I'm just saying, instead of just door-to-door, they get their neighbors' opinions and, and try to answer all their questions at once.
What do you do when you got twenty-five people that say, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, and you got fifteen people that are absolutely not okay with it? I, I'm not okay with going against those fifteen people.
Well, I understand that.
I mean, if there's one or two.
That works in the advisory council.
So basically, the direction, the Tribune Plant, the design of the Tribune Plant is, is moving forward. This building is obviously a, a piece of that design. In order to move forward in a productive manner, basically we need some sort of, you know, feedback from you guys saying that this is what you wanna do. If you guys say, you know what, if one person says we don't want traffic on our street, then we're not gonna do it, then I can pretty much guarantee you right now that we're not gonna do it, since there's one person.
You have homework to do, and it's gotta be done quickly. Yeah, we're, we're talking about the road, we're talking about talking to the people, we're talking about a plan for this building, and I understand you're on a timeline, but I think what you've heard is, yeah, go forward.
Well, see, the, there is a timeline, and the timeline, if we leave the building in the same general facility, or over the same pond that it's at, then the timeline is significantly longer than if we move it over to the other pond and do an access off of the N Street.
It's, that, that makes it longer.
No, it makes it extremely short, because we either have to fix that pond or we need to fill it in.
Well, you better get busy.
Well, then you can fill it in and change the plan.
So if we move that building over, then we don't have to fix that pond, we can start working on filling it in.
So you can use it.
But if we're not gonna do that, then we need to fix the pond.
So let's derive what we need to find out with the access.
So you were already kind of holding off on that, we had that discussion.
Well, we're running a guy this week to get board direction on whether we're gonna actually spend the money to.
I never, I never would've given myself one week to get all that done.
I didn't have a week to get all of it done, I had a week to get a price together for fixing the pond. So, and it's not a week, it's tomorrow, so.
What's tomorrow?
The deadline for posting the packets.
Oh.
For next week.
Well, you can still, you can still get consensus of the board, I mean.
So.
We, we all, well, almost all of us were part of this discussion.
So basically, if we, if we want to, if the consensus is that you guys want to go through the N Street access, it might be two or three months by the time we get a response back from Verroa Road, and have adequate plans for them to review, and finally tell us no. So, either we're going to go forward on the premise that the building is gonna be where it is, or we're shown, or we're going to go forward on the premise that the building will be on the other pond and access it after.
Is there a way? Is there a way to consider public access from that road, leaving that pond?
You could do that, but the isolation is gonna be a lot more, it's in-depth, not like a very curb-y feeling either. Yeah, it's not gonna be super fantastic.
That's right, drive past the fountain to get to the CSD. Uh, you know, I don't have an answer for you, I don't. Figure, figure out what you're gonna do with this building and how we can incorporate people making their payments here. That's gonna, that's gonna eliminate half, more than half of the traffic.
And. So.
I mean, when you say, when you say four people average, and you're talking about twenty-one days. That's, that's.
That's a six-point.
Six-point four.
Okay, I'm sorry, six-point four for twenty-one days. Can you beat me to it?
Just one down.
Hundred and thirty. Pretty close.
Hundred and thirty-four, I said.
Good job.
You're talking about eliminating a hundred and thirty-four, that's a two-hundred-and-sixty-eight trips past people's houses. That's, that's really a lot of traffic, that's a lot of traffic.
No cash and credit cards is, is the way to go.
I think so, and I don't care about your other cities.
Hey, you know what? The state likes to care about us, cause we're not a charter city, so that means that we have to follow what the state says on half of everything.
Does anybody wanna go home?
Well, Calvin, how come, how come any, any company, there, there's a lot of companies that, that don't, don't take cash.
Oh, sure, I know, and they're gonna be hit.
So what's the difference between, we're.
The bank is going towards not taking cash.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah.
It's not, it's not me, and it's not, it's not us, it's the way how the state likes to do things, they like to fill out these crazy laws and then punish us for living in the state.
It's also a difference, we're a public agency too.
At first people would be resistant to it, it was just paying cash, but when they give them an avenue and educate them how to pay their bill without cash, and they start doing it that way, you would, you would eliminate it eventually.
ACH check, postal money order, I mean, there's a number of avenues to post.
Sure. We wanna know that.
I don't, we could take Zelle, what's the other, Venmo.
Bitcoin.
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 Yeah. When do you guys wanna have another meeting?
We have one next Thursday.
Okay, the next Thursday meeting, I would like you to, uh, query the board on when to have another meeting to address functional space within the district.
Concerning all properties in all these districts?
Should we say next November? No. When do you guys do it, December twenty-fifth?
How about you?
I'm putting full on somebody stalking.
That would be December twenty-fourth.
We have a meeting on the twenty-first?
The nineteenth. Twenty-first is the Christmas period.
Saturday.
So we have a meeting December nineteenth.
Nope, uh, what about November twenty-first?
November twenty-first.
That's next week.
Right, yeah, that's our working. And then what about December fifth? That's a Thursday.
There's something else going on that day.
You're just opening Pine Street.
No.
Not the garbage disposal, is it?
I think that's the sixth.
What's the sixth?
The garbage disposal.
I thought it was the thirteenth.
That's the thirteenth.
That's the thirteenth.
The fifth, third?
The Thurs- it's a Thursday, not a Friday. Thursday the fifth.
Okay.
Is there a choice?
Say again? Just, we're not saying it. Yeah, oh, yeah, there's absolutely a choice.
So you wanna, you want next, next week you have all the board.
I want next week to pull, yeah. Pull the board about having a discussion. We were all here. Regarding the fire station and all of the functional space in the district.
And all the, the needs of the district, I mean, add it, so we, no one can say, oh, that's out of our scope of discussion.
And. Is there a way to, is there a way to do it this way?
What are you talking about, well sites and?
Say that again.
The pump houses?
What's that?
I mean, you're talking all, he's talking about all the property within the district, you're talking to well sites and the pump houses.
What we, what we're asking, so that we couldn't get in trouble for discussing the old fire station, the new fire station, this building.
So you basically ask for.
The pumps, the wells, it was functional space.
So if you wanna talk about every property we have.
I don't wanna talk about it, I wanna have the ability to, if the ability to discuss.
So if you wanna be able to talk about all of the properties in the district, that you wanna be able to talk about all the facilities, not the functional space, because wells are not functional.
No, okay, so just functional, we'll keep it the functional space for now.
So all the, like, office.
Personal water is a function.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. We understand what you're saying.
Occupy.
Occupiable.
If you're happy to give me the functional spaces, just do that.
Functional space.
We already have an agenda that says it on the functional space, we got it.
And, but that will allow us to.
And that, that was what Helene understands, that's what she came up with.
Who paid much money for that?
Let's do that.
Somebody came up with that.
Anyway. I was the director, Helene was coming up with stuff.
Yes, and what was the intent, to talk about that or talk about her?
That and what this would be.
And we occupy that.
I appreciate that.
Eight forty-one, call the meeting.
You didn't ask for board member comments.
Board member comments, I did, I asked you if you had a last word.
I thought you were talking about the item, that was only intended.
Last word?
I have to submit something to staff because I think you have a legal liability problem with one of our properties.
One of our properties?
Well, somebody fenced off one of our properties. That would be the old well site, which owns for about six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, not the size of this table. I found out because I got the ancestor map of that property.
Was it that one?
Uh, it's off the alleyway, this is, uh, Fourteenth Street, it's that lot right there, number three, it's a.
Off of Fourteenth?
Uh, it's the alleyway, Fourteenth and Thirteenth right here, so it's twenty-five by twenty-five square foot lot that the district owns right there, and it's completely fenced off right now, with trash on it.
A photo mat pay station right there.
But, the point is.
I suggested a kiosk, but you said no.
No, a kiosk is a good idea, but it's gonna have to have the Arco Inglewood door on it.
But, is it, if that's district property, shouldn't we, A, have access to it, and B, is that a liability that's on something that someone else has fenced it off a little?
You wanna buy it?
Well, it's actually less of a liability now, because they're actually, even though there's trash on it, they're protecting it and taking care of it. Before there was a fence, they, we had people digging holes there to try to find old bottles. And they actually dug from that property under the fence, under the neighbor's shed, and the floors collapsing to the neighbor's shed.
Old body.
Old bottles, like beer bottles and.
There was a guy around town, random digging spot, based on history that he served.
There's a spot up in the, where you can get where there's pubs, saloons, and places where coin ball through the floor, and he would go out there, and he's like a mole.
You'd drive by, looked like he had a vacuum with a little struggle, he would dig and you'd see the top of the bed.
Okay, what is it you wanna accomplish?
It's just that, A, are we supposed to have access to this, I mean, this guy's.
If you have access, the owner of that property is aware that that's our corner of a property.
Even though it's fenced off.
Even though it's fenced, kind of fenced off.
And it's on the corner.
It's on the corner.
And what, show me, what's our property?
It would be where all these trees are and this trash.
Just this little spot.
It's about twenty-five.
Between, behind this.
Actually, I think it's further, because probably it's that gate.
It's twenty-five to twenty-five.
Yeah, that's twenty-five feet right there.
Yeah.
Okay, and what do you wanna do with it?
Well, I don't know, it, I mean, what are we supposed to do with a thing that we don't have, do we have access to it or whatever? You know, what's the deal with that?
Well, the gates are blocked.
The gates are blocked.
So, is there other people's property on that property? Is there trash and stuff?
Probably.
There's, it looks like a broken wagon or a doghouse or something running there. I don't know what it is, it's a black and white.
So the.
I don't.
Looks like a little trailer.
Sure you have a way of picture.
That was, that was in Google Street images, that's Google Street images. I took a picture earlier today.
That's not our property.
What, what's the address, Anthony?
The address.